The cafeteria will be hosting UC's up students tonight, tomorrow, April 11th. A S P. The first powder puff football scrimmage on March 29th was a success with student and coach involvement. The senior class hosted the annual senior buddy auction resulting in great staff and student participation. The annual spring blood drive took place today, April 10th. Spring food spirit week is currently taking place from April 8th through the 12th, which involves daily student dress up days and march rallies. Our next A S P food day is scheduled for May 3rd in honor of the month. Barbara Webster. Barbara Webster just completed a very successful parent educational training. The fabulous Koku Agwire taught several parents how to read to you and interact with their children around reading. They are also getting ready for state testing. Principal Madrigal personally met with every third, fourth, and fifth grader to tell them to do their best on the test. Their hardworking staff has been working overtime to learn about how to make our school safer and happier place. They just finished a five-part professional development series on socio-emotional learning. Lunchtime. On Wednesday, March 27th, the first grade students performed the Three Little Pigs in front of the school during the afternoon, and parents in the evening. On Monday, April 1st, Lunchtime students attended assemblies on pipeline safety. On Saturday, April 8th, Lunchtime A S P students worked on campus beautification, pulling weeds, trimming plants, and spreading out woodchips. Glen City. Glen City students have raised 6,000 during our Joga Khan fundraiser. 100% of the proceeds go directly to Glen City students for field trips, playground equipment, and exciting school assemblies. After spring break, the two students who raised the most money will become principal and assistant principal for the day. Graceville. The academic ambassadors club led by Phil's counselor, Mr. Aguilar, have explored different types of colleges online over the past few months. Each student selected several colleges of interest and wrote letters to the college administration department requesting information. Students have been very excited to receive T-shirts, pennants, stickers, pamphlets, and other college material. They have heard back from C S U C I, U C S V, U S C, the University of Texas, UCLA, M I T, and many others. Graceville students are college community. This week at recess, Mr. Aguilar has sponsored game tables where students can play games with their friends, promoting social skills such as sharing, taking turns, working together, and even how to use grace training and leave it sport about it. Second grade students took an exciting trip to the Student Warner's Sea Center in Santa Barbara. They were both in touch things and learning about sea life. First graders took a trip to Underwood Farms this week to learn about farming, caring for animals, and where our food is grown. Fourth graders will visit the Santa Barbara Mission and proceed to them on April 30th. McKeavitt. The Latina literacy project has been taking place. The program has been well received by our parents and they are eagerly looking forward to upcoming events. The final Latina literacy project meeting will be on April 10th. Kinder Rendez took place on March 26th and was a success. We're looking forward to an exciting 1920 school year. Coffee with the superintendics took place on March 27th. Mr. Cora shared his story with McKeavitt families and took the time to address individual questions. Crimson Pipeline presented an assembly for our student body and educated our students regarding safety protocols to follow prior to digging. Students were given a short activity, particularly at home. Students who returned activity will receive a blinking safety reflector. Classes that have a 90% return rate will run a pizza party sponsored by Crimson Pipeline. Upcoming events. Kinder Rendez students will be performing the Three Piggy Opera for the parents on April 11th at 1:45. McKeavitt students will be participating in the Friends of McKeavitt Annual Joga Khan fundraiser on April 12th at 1:30. Thank you.
Now it's time for Dr. Cora's presentation.
Thank you, President Reyes, and thank you. I took one of mine out and so one of us actually made a mistake. I'd like to begin by thanking our board trustees for providing the vision for the Isbell Science Lab and District Ag Center. The random openings for B O D E services were held on the March 30th and ran very smoothly. We had quite turnout at the Ag Center that day, I mean, it was about 500 people. I also want to thank Ms. Scheffler, Ms. Garcia, Mr. Briggs, Mr. Henning, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Flores, Ms. Royal, Ms. Alenzuela, and my host of others, other individuals who had some parts planning of preparation of the two year opening. And I thought they were very positive. The all district band concert last week was phenomenal. If you did not go, you missed out on a free performance. As a matter of fact, I felt guilty that I was sitting there and I didn't pay. I shouldn't pay for that event because they were incredible. The elementary students started off and then we got off to the middle school students and then the high school students ended the evening night in chorus singing. So I want to say congratulations to Ms. Thorn, Mr. Valdivia, Mr. Neff, Mr. Cruz, and Mr. Marquez for conducting an absolutely unbelievable performance by their students and with a great job. I also want to congratulate principals Dr. Lilo and Ms. Garcia and their respective staffs at Glen City and at the high school for a successful federal program monitoring visit two weeks ago. Ms. Scheffler, Ms. Ramirez, and other district staff who played a lot of work behind the scenes that was needed to accommodate the reviewers from the California Department of Education and a minimal number finally being taken care of and are expected to be signed off by C D very soon. So thank you to everyone who's a part of that. I look forward to attending tomorrow evening's UC awards ceremony and dinner reception sponsored by the Early Academic Outreach Program, also known as E A L P. Students from our high school who have been admitted into a university California school for the 2019-20 school year. They will be recognized tomorrow night and the event will begin at 6:00 P. M. in Bryant Gym. Thursday, April 24th is recognized as Administrative Professionals Day. We will be on spring break on April 24th. So I would like to say thank you very much to all of our administrative professionals throughout the district for their hard work and dedicated service to student staff and parents at our schools. And one last long and special thank you to my executive systems, Montestela Garcia, for her knowledge, positive attitude, and tireless work at the ethic. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And lastly, I want to wish our students and staff a fun and restful upcoming spring break. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. And did you notice on last working, the last working in March, he was Mr. Cora? This month, he's Dr. Cora. He has earned his doctorate?
Thank you, but also Dr. Lilo as well. You both, I spent one weekend and presented the next weekend.
Okay. Fourth speaker, Super Detective Committee Updates. Dr. Cora.
Yes, we're starting this month and will continue to have this on our agenda. We have some of our board members who are serving on committees. So I'd love to offer our board members, we'd like to go first, and we'll pull out some of their committees.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Yesterday, Tuesday, April 9th, Mrs. Kolbeck and myself attended a joint committee meeting with the mayor, Quinn Barton, and Mr. Koro Agwire as councilmember, as well as Mr. Rock as team manager. A couple of topics that we discussed were traffic and safety around schools. One of the things that came up was crossing guards. And the city will be looking into options to explore with us in regards to potentially providing some sort of crossing guard for the busy intersections during school hours, for busy times in school hours. We also talked about discussing school resource officer funding. We're trying to get a school resource officer to nail entry level, so we're continuing to talk about that. We also discussed short ventures in regards to shed facilities, which led into the update on the visual park plan for the new East Area 1 coming in. And we also discussed money for the budget teen youth fund. And then we discussed a C D Y disaster preparedness drill that might be able to occur in the district and the city because as we know from the Thomas fire, one day, the school might culminate to how citizens have hunger and so to citizens. That's basically what we discussed, Mr. Kolbeck, I think. Go ahead.
And then councilmembers who are asked to be updated about the policy on drugs, especially the vapor pens and that because he is concerned about the officer and also about our safety of our students.
This is me.
Last Monday, Mrs. Thompson and I observed the LCAP meeting. I learned several things, even though I've been attending several of the meetings throughout the year. I learned that the complete LCAP was 150 to 170 pages long. I'm used to learning with a one-page summary. Okay. One thing that I was really impressed with, and it's come up before, and it was so exciting to see that it's happening, is the our 1819 LCAP budget crosswalk. I know a lot of people have been wondering where the money here from where it's going, and it's all on one page. That is amazing. Thank you. So that was wonderful to see.
Sherri did a great example of our budget with the water bottle. 75% of the water was from general fund and 45% was going towards LCAP funds. I think a lot of people got it. We talked about what things from the previous meeting that the representatives wanted to continue. The top item to continue was counselors and mental health support. The top item that they wanted to change and improve on was specific tutoring by subject. And then they wanted to add, the top item was a home room advisory, and that has to do with planning the scheduling. And one of the most interesting things that I heard from an employee from her group talk about was how can we improve, looking at the parent responses from the survey, how can we improve district communication? Because they were concerned about the number of parents that answered, "I don't know." Was it they were for it or against it? We need to give the number of items down, and a communication that district will always want to improve on that. So that was the thing that we talked about.
This is Thompson. Yeah. I'll just talk about the Medical Scholarship Foundation, how that came from LCAP. And the Scholarship Foundation currently has close to $1 million. And the idea is to just give scholarships from the trust so that we can always be continued, so the foundation can always maintain the ability to give scholarships. And what we're trying to do right now is to make sure that our high school students know how to access the application process. We're also looking for people in the community who might want to endow the foundation with a scholarship for specifically maybe family or for honor, in honor of someone. I think the amount was around $10,000. Going into that almost $100,000, making sure that that would be a potential scholarship that could be given over and over and over every year. So Scholarship Foundation Committee is doing great work to give away a lot of scholarships every year to our students. And we just want to keep giving as quickly as possible. It's a great, it's a great community. But the scholarship application committee around September May and then soon to May by a committee. And scholarships will be awarded at senior award night. It's always a wonderful, wonderful night. We do not want to do that. Just need to go so that you see the end product, especially if you're in elementary school or Ismail. You get to see those students that you guys have worked so hard with, get up there and get that culminating award. And it's not just the Scholarship Foundation, it's a whole lot of other parents, so.
Thank you very much to the Harvard Board for giving their updates on the case. It's time for our questions. For education, we love and support the primary.
Thanks, President Reyes. I'd love to ask President Reyes, looking up to the podium?
At this time, we'd also like to call up Dr. Lilo up to the mic. He's going to announce for our dinner of the month, and any classified employee of the month as well.
Good evening. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for coming. Need to recognize two staff members to make Glen City a wonderful place to be. To begin, I would like to introduce and celebrate our classified employees of the month. This is Rodrana Rodriguez. She is a member of our Child Nutrition Services Department. It's always nice to watch someone consistently smile very good at her work shift. The parents, students, staff, and staff are drinking with her smile and positive energy when interacting with students. Being new to Glen City this year, she feels both comfortable and nice with a warm smile and offered any help that we needed. She may not remember we offered her help, but it gives me the impact of the class that we're setting up for her. It also gave her small pieces of the type of person you are. Every day, she works closely with her colleagues to ensure student meals are prepared and ready to be served for the 560 hungry Glen City residents. More than just ensuring all students are fed, it is the fact that she cares about the wellbeing of each child. One specific story I would like to share, which has occurred about a title. She came to my office, asked to speak with me and share her concerns. At the end of the conversation, she said, "I'm sorry to come to you, and I know it's not my place, but I needed you to know about this child." First, I told her that she never had to apologize for coming to talk with me since she was a teenager. Then I praised her for coming to me by telling her that it was absolutely her place to all work together to ensure that our students have the proper support needed. It was at that moment when I knew she's exactly the type of staff member who is deserving of this reputation. Although I had already known because of her warm smiles and willingness to help, this conversation sealed the deal first. It is important for all staff members to know that the conditions we serve in are not indicative of the relationships we can build with students. It is the responsibility of all staff members to work together to provide the best educational environment possible. It is because of people like Miss Rothanna that students feel welcome, safe, and special while spending their days at school. Because of this, she is someone I'm honored to work on with. Not only am I grateful to work with her, I am thankful for the opportunity to learn from her. Even though we don't always have the opportunity to talk, I learned from you by watching you. Your actions definitely speak loud. For these reasons, I am proud to recognize Miss Rothanna as a good fellow classified employee of the month.
I only get told me I was going to get two minutes to speak, but I had no idea she would speak so kindly to me.
Coming up for discussion for the agenda. When addressing the board of trustees, please stand and be recognized by the board. In accordance with Education Code 35145.5, the board cannot enter into a formal discussion or make a decision on any matter not on the agenda for this week. So, let's start with the one, Ojeda.
Can I give you a little? Good evening to all members of the board and everyone in the room. My name is Juan Ojeda. This evening, I would like to thank you for the opportunity given to the partners who go to Glen City. It was a great, great journey. And we all learned a lot of information. I open the invitation to join us next time. I had a chance to see several of our members, superintendents, and some of the board chairs. And we all learned together, in a valley. All of the partners who attend have a plan to speak and share what we can learn to every single school kid we don't visit. We don't have a base yet, but please come and join us for any of our presentations. We would be happy to see you there. One more thing that I would like to share or suggest is please increase board chairs for parents in general. Where we can learn more and more how the school system works and how we can support our students and work together as a team. So together as a team, we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ojeda. Our next speaker is Jill Ottega. Oh, you want to go first? Jeanette Ottega.
Good evening. Some probably near my school is doing more superintendent. Cora, students, parents, staff, everybody here. I'd like to start with comments out by your reading. Bydawg, born Bydawg, Sun Pond School District. The board's education will need some of this higher responsibility to act best for children, students, and the district. The board also has to either commit its permanent charges to all members of the community, employees of the state of California, laws pertaining to public education, and establish maximum authority for this, have confidence in district governance. Board members are expected to govern responsibility and hold itself in the highest standards of ethical conduct. The ethical conduct is acting in ways consistent with society and individuals typically think and good values. Ethical behavior tends to be good for business and involve demonstrating the respect and routine law principles that include honesty, fairness, equality, dignity, diversity, and individual rights. On March 13th, 2019, we had a regular meeting pertaining, the board meeting was regarding the daycare option. We were going to be discussing, we were going to be discussing how many presentations was on the agenda as 70 infant care presentations. Item 70 was set as a presentation of three different programs. And from what I believe were board members more aware.
Students in exciting, age-appropriate ways and ensure students are engaged in the learning process. If you visit our classroom, you will often find her utilizing technology to bring her lessons to life. Student Ginkgo and will experience a joyous feeling, almost like a feeling you've had in this spread. She freed her classroom of a lot of technological technology to bring her lessons. For those who don't know Mrs. Ginkgo, she will experience a joyous feeling, almost like people who have not seen her spread. She freed her classroom of a lot of technological technology. For those who have come with me, for those who don't know Mrs. Ginkgo, she is the leader of all of her grade levels and within our school community. She currently serves on our site leadership team and is a member of our school site council. What I appreciate about Mrs. Ginkgo's leadership is the fact that she has an amazing ability to share suggestions, express concern, and provide input in the most professional manner. Because of her ability to communicate effectively, her messages are heard loudly clear. I believe that Glen City staff appreciates her input and view her as someone who speaks on behalf of students' best interest. Teachers have a classroom, have classrooms full of students of different backgrounds. In order to effectively meet their needs and provide the appropriate support, they must truly know their students, their stories. I can assure you that Mrs. Ginkgo makes every effort to learn what her students need and does everything she can to meet those needs. She has ensured that her students have the necessary support to be both academically and socially successful. Her communication with the families helps build the homeschool relationship and allows parents and guardians to feel comfortable talking with her. Just as important, she maintains confidentiality when dealing with sensitive situations, also very important. Students in Mrs. Ginkgo's class are extremely lucky to have her as their teacher. Glen City is extremely lucky to have her as part of our Glen City family. For these reasons, I am proud to recognize Mrs. Sofia Ginkgo as our certificate and employee of the month.
On behalf of the board, we'd like to present the certificate of recognition.
Thank you very much. I'm preparing. I did not write anything, but as ladies, I have got very few words open to say. Thank you very much. I come to school every day, happy to come here, work hard, truly, truly want the best for my students, and I hope I give it to them every single. Thank you very much.
That is our favorite part of our meeting, is the recognition of our educators. And the one person who we missed from the call off was Mario Iglesias. I'll say hi. Run, which you cannot run. And, and at this point, we are going to take a five-minute break. So feel free to.
See, five present in this, I was told, no, you already reneged. This was highly imperative. Boy, they spoke after I was spoke. I was not able, it was very embarrassing to me. And it wasn't, where students are, this board is here for us parents. We're not here for your beliefs or what you think is right. We're here as parents to fight what we want for our children. It wasn't for what we are, that this board is here for us parents. We're not here for your beliefs or to ask what you think is right. We're here as parents to fight what we want for our children. I really think that something needs to be put in writing on regards to that because it could happen to somebody else. And me as a parent, I'm here to make sure that my child and our precious children are getting what they deserve and what they need. And it's not my personal reasoning, it's what I believe. It's what I believe is occurring constantly across this school district that people are more concerned about what they want and not what's good for our children. This has happened to me many times in this district. This is not something new, but something needs to change because it's not fair for our children to have the people that are more concerned about what they want than what our children need.
Thank you, Mrs. Ojeda. Our last speaker of the night will be Elizabeth Garcia.
Good evening, Madam President, Lord members, Assistant Superintendent, Superintendent. So I just wanted to show this trophy, how we got first place in the underwater robotics competition. Uh, so this was led by our teacher, our math teacher, and department head, Lori LaRigas. We had nineteen students who participated in the MAST, uh, event. So MAST stands for Maritime Advanced Systems and Technology, Open House and Technology Expo, uh, where students learned about, uh, foam squat technology, drill engineering, and then the robotic racing competition. This was the first time in Santa Paula, um, so I just wanted to brag a little bit, and thank you so much.
Thank you, um, Mrs. Garcia, or Mrs. Garcia, for bringing. Okay, uh, moving forward to the presentations. Uh, seven A, Senator, now the higher education needs and priorities, Dr. Cora. Uh, people?
So what I'd like to do is, um, I'd like to, first of all, um, here at the San Paula Unified School District, um, I'd like to welcome Dr. Daniel Bell, interim president from Ventura Community College. Uh, Dr. Bell is here this evening, um, on behalf of Ventura Community College, who will share a message on behalf of the college and on behalf of our chancellor. Welcome, Mr. Bell.
Hey guys, my name is Daniel Bell. I've been serving as, um, I've been serving as the interim president at Ventura College for the past ten months. For the past ten months, I've been serving in that position. And so tonight, actually, I'm here on behalf of our chancellor, um, Dr. Greg Gillespie, uh, who has sent me here with some very strict directions on what he would like for, for me to say, but I'd like to say, um, that I'm very happy to be here tonight. We have done, um, a lot of work in our Santa Paula, East Campus. Here in Santa Paula, we recently hired an assistant dean, um, Dr. Adesu Seda, who is working, um, at the campus and in the community. Uh, I hope that he has had an opportunity to get out to meet, uh, most of you, and will be, will continue to work with you. Uh, Dr. Gillespie offices apologies for not being there, he has to be out of town, so he sent me here with orders to share. I apologize in advance for reading, but if I don't, you know, if I didn't. So Ventura College and Ventura County Community College District value our, value our partnership with the Santa Paula Unified School District. Your students can access Ventura College classes at the East Campus location in Santa Paula, in the high school, online, and at Ventura College. Student enrollments at Ventura College East Campus have been declining for the past few years. New class offerings at the East Campus provide students the ability to obtain two different transfer associate degrees, one in arts and humanities and another in behavioral and social sciences. This should help the enrollment growth. We are not looking to relocate the East Campus at this time. But the Ventura Community College District looks forward to participating in visioning discussions organized by your school district regarding the joint high school higher education facility in Santa Paula. Working together, we can create unique ways for Santa Paula students to take higher education classes and programs within the high school and afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bell. Appreciate you being here, I appreciate you, uh, representing Dr. Gillespie. Thank you.
Uh, Len, Lenjo Morata would like to speak.
I'm pressing more members. My name is Lenjo Morata, and, um, and Dr. Bell's presentation. I just want to inform the board that, uh, as President of Santa Paula, the Chief of Staff, and a member of the Santa Clara Valley together, we've been working for many, many years now with the Community College, uh, in an attempt to really strengthen and, uh, increase opportunities for our students here in, in Santa Paula initially, and now we're looking at the entire Santa Clara Valley. Um, so what I wanted to, um, ask is that, uh, that we be, uh, continue to be, uh, partners in this, uh, discussion. I, uh, you know, we've been, uh, speaking to, we need to have a, an educational center, uh, that one day we be, uh, kind of our, kind of our own Santa Clara Valley, um, college. And, uh, and I, we understand the situation that Ventura College finds itself with, uh, trying to enroll it, but at the same time, we feel that, uh, that much needs to be done to, uh, to improve the opportunities, to increase opportunities for our students, and we appreciate the two new majors that have been established, but, uh, a greater effort on my part, I feel, it needs to include a plan of action to really, uh, increase enrollment throughout this town. And, uh, we have had some initial meetings with the, with the new assistant dean, but I just want to make sure that, uh, uh, we continue to be at the table of, uh, discussions because I, uh, we have a lot of history, and, uh, we feel that this community, uh, is, uh, definitely warrants, uh, better opportunities for our kids. So we appreciate the effort, and I hope that, uh, we can continue to, uh, to grow in terms of, uh, the discussion. Okay.
College and Board.
This actually plays into what we discussed at a prior board meeting, is that the vision really starts with this board. Um, they are our students, and we do want them to go into higher education or just, um, highly educated, um, areas. And there are so many opportunities, we believe, in Santa Clara Valley, but again, I think, and we gave, um, Dr. Cora the, um, green light, that this board really wants to be the leader in that, and we appreciate Ventura College, um, reaching out because they do play an important role in that. Thank you. I'll be glad. They do and will play an important role in that, but until we can set the vision with our CTEs, our pathways, um, and this just came to mind because of the wonderful band, um, performance last Thursday night, where the gym was filled with band students. There were four hundred students that were not part of that, and it just keeps growing and growing, and so we have so many opportunities between the band and the ag and the human resources that now is the time to plan, because, um, these are the ones coming in, and for once, we can be the leader in Santa Clara Valley.
I'd kind of like to say that since we can have a representative here for Ventura College, that, um, Santa Clara Valley would like to see opportunities in our neighborhoods as the East side of the county, um, as, I'm sure Dr. Gillespie's heard this need to know, but we can feel that, um, we have seen opportunities, so we are looking forward to working with you on planning, and, um, I'm hoping that you don't always have to wait for us, like you come to us, as, as you are tonight, and, um, see what offerings are in high school, at the high school level, and see what Ventura College can do to expand on that. For example, we do have, uh, a new engineering upgrade, you have a new engineering classes you can offer through Ventura College. We'd really like you to connect with, uh, what we already have existing, so that they can make a natural transfer. And, um, so we're asking for you to reach out to us, and of course, we will reach you halfway, but we are extremely interested in pursuing a relationship here in Santa Clara Valley, and, um, we hope that it works out, going on planning to actuality. So with that, is there any other questions?
No, I'd like to say, I know, um, Dr. Bell has another appointment, so this is probably a good opportunity for you to slide at the door and make the other appointment. Thank you, Dr. Bell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seven B, Cooperative Strategies. Consider public input regarding composition of the trustee areas prior to initiating the map drawing process. Dr. Cora.
Yes, thank you, President Liras. Cooperative Strategies is the company that we hired to come in and help us, um, to work on the composition of the trustee areas prior to initiating a map drawing, and this evening we have Representative Andrew Chitipong, and, um, this is the second. This is the, uh, the second presentation we have for the general public, um, and this presentation is then followed up by a public, um, hearing. So, um, Mr. Chitipong, I appreciate you being here. Your honor, thank you.
Alright, good evening, Board, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, staff. Uh, as you said, my name is Lenjo Chitipong, different cooperative strategies, and I think it is an exciting presentation on trustee areas and the process. Uh, so I'll be short of three since it is the second time you will be hearing his presentation. Uh, so there are currently three elections that we have in California. The first being the at-large elections, where candidates reside within the school district's boundaries and are elected by voters who reside within these, uh, school district's boundaries, and this is the system that is currently used by the Santa Paula Unified School District. The second being from trustee areas, where candidates must reside in specific geographic areas, um, called trustee areas, and are elected by the voters who reside within the district's boundaries. The third is the by trustee areas, where the candidates reside in these, uh, trustee areas that are created, and are only elected by voters who would, who reside within these, uh, trustee areas. So this is the only method that is safe and, uh, from challenge under the California Voting Rights Act. Um, so a little bit of background on what California Voting Rights is. Uh, so it did take effect in January the first of two thousand and three, and it says that it prohibits the use of at-large elections, but such an election system repairs the ability of a protected class to elect candidates of its choice or its ability to influence the outcome of an election. Uh, so the board hasn't initiated the process to transition from an at-large system of elections to a by-area election. So this is the calendar that we currently have for the process. Uh, so the first pre-map public hearing was on March thirteenth, um, the second is today, April tenth. Um, so May eighth is the first, uh, public hearing where we will present the drafts of the maps that we have created. Um, June, on June twelfth, we have second public hearing, where we are, we are, we are looking for, uh, feedback and comments, um, as well as the public hearing for the general waiver request. Uh, and July tenth is the, uh, third final public hearing for these maps, and the, uh, let's say where the board will adopt one of the scenarios that we have presented. And then from there, we'll go to the county, uh, for submission, and be listed and ready for the, uh, November twenty twenty motion. So a couple of key considerations when we're drawing these areas is that each area, uh, shall contain equal number of inhabitants. Uh, we do have a ten percent variance between the largest area and the smallest area, and I'll be, uh, going into a little more detail on the next slide. So it also has to be drawn to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, uh, compact and meticulous as much as possible, respect communities of interest, um, as best as we can, follow man-made and natural geographic features such as roads and highways, respect occupancy, it is a consideration, but it cannot be the sole consideration when drawing these areas, and other, uh, local considerations such as school boundaries or school sites. So here, we do have the district's demographics. Um, these numbers do come from the twenty ten census, and as you can see at the bottom, the total population within the school district boundaries are about thirty-two thousand, um, in population, and if we divide that by five, uh, for the five areas that we're about to create, that are roughly equal about sixty-four hundred in each area, plus or minus, uh, six hundred and forty for the ten percent variance. And at the bottom, you can also see the age of eighteen and over at twenty-two thousand five hundred, with the demographic breakdown of each, uh, subgroup. So what we're really looking at and focusing on is the citizens voting age population. So these are all your eligible voters within your school district, and that number at the bottom of the table is six thousand seven hundred and twenty of eligible voters, and the purpose of this is to increase the voting power of the protected class. Uh, so we do have the latest updated, the most updated census information, uh, where you can see the Latino Hispanic community is, uh, at sixty-six percent of eligible voters, um, the white population at about thirty percent, African American about zero point three three percent, and so on and so forth. And, uh, we do have a density map of the Hispanic Latino community of the, uh, voting age population for the city of Santa Paula, so you can see where, uh, a majority of those members live, and, uh, we kind of focus on the citizens voting age when we're, um, drawing these areas. So this is a blank map of your school district, and, um, for you to comment and provide some feedback of how you want these areas to be drawn. So some feedback that we're looking for is that we would like to keep neighborhood X and then put Y together, um, some more specific examples, maybe the intersections of highway one twenty-six and highway one fifty, because geographically that makes some sense for us. Also, other examples that we may be looking for from the board or from the public are that each, uh, elementary or boundary should, uh, be served by multiple board members, or what maybe one area would represent one board member more than the other, just because it keeps the two of us together. So now we're going to look it up, uh, to the board for any questions or comments.
What are we going to do, what are you guys going to do to make sure that you do get enough public input, because the last year that we had, um, there was just two people still coming ahead, um, or you want to get a more generalized, uh, public opinion?
Um, I think doing what you're doing now, posting it on your website, as well as reaching out through social media, I know some other school districts use, uh, thumbnail flyers, uh, but we don't really get much feedback until the first set of draft maps are presented, just because people don't really know how the areas are looking out for, like what's possible. So it's not until the public sharing this when we get the most feedback.
And there's someone else to address that as well, um, making sure that it was not only part of the agenda, obviously, that it was on the website, and we also put it on social media and all, so, um, you know, if there's, if there's ideas other than those, um, obviously we're open to how else to be, get information from your parents, but like Mr. Chitipong said, that, um, past history shows in other districts that until the first map comes out, that's when people start saying, oh, that's what they're figuring out, then comments start coming.
And when we get a first map, are we going to publicize that in paper, the map in general?
That's a great question. Does it have to be put in paper, or is it an option?
So the process is that each map that is presented has to be, um, on the website seven days prior to the public hearing, so yes, it do have to be, um, published to whatever, um, platform that you're posting on.
But if we want to put it in paper, that's something that we can do.
Do you have to publish it in a little bit of paper, like on, uh?
Alright, the process on that, I would have to ask you, I'll turn you over.
And we'll do it single, fine line.
Yeah, my only concern is I just want the public to actually know what we're doing, so that, um, people see it, not just clearly, I just want them to be able to see it as well, don't lose it, so, you know, this is my sense.
And if you're actually going to board for the critical, it's the immediate.
Can we also, when these people are accustomed to in Santa Paula is the Santa Clara Valley, it means we're not giving reviews.
Um, can we also, oh, what's going on? Can we also post it at the school so their parents that pick up and drop off would see it, and might not take the paper to social media? Is part of your puzzle trying to distribute the solid like on the map there, you know, there's heavily populated areas of the Hispanic voting? Do you have to distribute them kind of evenly throughout the the area?
No, so actually the objective is to kind of keep them all in one area so we have a higher representation and voting power when the election comes around. So so first example, this is showing the Hispanic Latino community. So we start off start off with this base map and kind of creating an area that will outline where the highest population of Hispanic Latino voting population is. That way they can possibly have maybe seventy-five percent citizens voting age percentage of people living in that area, which is. Well, here the overall district average is seventy-eight percent, so it's probably going to be closer to like a ninety percent of voting area for that population. As opposed to the seventy-eight for the overall school district.
So Mr. Chitipong, so I'm so unclear as well with the board. So before the first map gets done for cooperative strategies and come up with that draft, what do you need to hear from the board?
Initially, we would like to hear some comments such as how, a couple of comments such as these neighborhoods should be together because they make the most sense. Sometimes you don't hear any feedback from the board or the public and I kind of just make a few options and scenarios to what I think is appropriate. Just depending on the general layout of the school district. So if I see a couple of highways and roads, I'll kind of divide that into its own area where the total population needs to be earned to park.
It seems similar to why the public isn't giving any input at this point. We're not even getting any input, so we're kind of, we don't know what to buy yet until we get more information.
Right, and be aware that we do have three other meetings where you will also be invited of the opportunity to give new feedback and comments. So like, it is very hard to kind of imagine how these areas do look like without seeing any examples to feedback.
Because I know you mentioned one twenty-six, but it was just an example. There's not too many residents south of one twenty-six.
Right, yeah. So you can wait until I create a couple of scenarios or you can give me some general idea where to start. Or maybe a certain community or I guess you have, maybe they have a cultural area that's its own area. In fact, similar to that, so I have a general idea of what to keep in mind when I'm drawing these areas.
Yeah, because as I understand it, you're not including East Area One because you're not including one twenty census. Or after the twenty-twenty census, then that's going to be a whole variable.
So once the twenty-twenty census does come out, we do have to adjust these averages according to how the population is.
I think because we're so small of an area, and I know you've worked with smaller areas, but I'm not sure we can give input until we see a sample map. And you said that comes in May?
That comes in May, yes, so May first, you can expect the first set of maps to come out.
But, okay, so, but we have to have seven days prior that to?
Prior to the public hearing.
So when would the boards, when would it be available?
To the board, around May first, end of April. I took the color red.
I just wanted to, in talking to other board members that are in districts, I thought it was really interesting and maybe a plus, maybe not. But maybe a plus for our district to make sure it does not line up with specific school areas so that a member that is elected won't be just voting for that school that they, because we all need to work together as teams with all the district, that it would overlap into at least two. So that we're not just concentrating on one school as our district. I thought that was interesting.
And that's on my mind because people voting for you, their kids are going to be voting that school, but yet you cannot just have that school as your sole interest.
Right, and just as a reminder, each board member does have a petition that we consider the whole district at home.
So that part just changed.
Yeah.
That's the whole thing, yes. And something for the board, considering to these two, it's very great coming up. We're not stuck to that schedule. That can, we can always do another month. I've spoken to Mr. Furchon yesterday, it was, where we have March, April, we could do May as another public hearing. Before we get into the actual drawing of the maps. So if we stick to that schedule, we'll have another month later.
I I think that they need to take a hand at their maps. They know what rules they have to follow. And then once we see the maps, then I think we're in a better position to say, oh, you should move it up, you should move over, you should consider that. But at this point, like Mr. Jaya said, one twenty-six or east side, whatever, it's not going to help anything.
I'm agreeing with that. I think that the public's not going to get interested until they see it and they're like, whoa! So either it's great or ooh, we've got some comments there. So I think we should get the first map out of six five.
Are you saying your staff will not have enough time? Is that what you were saying?
No, no, I'm just saying that's an option if you want to. I hear you saying that and I agree with that.
Any other comments? Thank you so much for your presentation. Go ahead there. At this point, the February board will conduct a public hearing regarding the composition of the trustee areas prior to initiating the map drawing process. The public hearing is now open at seven eighteen P M. And I'm going to call for comments from the audience. Are there any? With no further comments, the public hearing is dismissed.
Why do you have to make?
Okay, please go ahead.
It's about why you were talking about that. I'm very disagree with the things you are doing because we as a public, we have not much information. I have here information because I come here, but if I don't show up to this meeting, I don't know anything. So I guess the public, the community is the ones that has decide, has to be informed. And honestly, this is no cake. I saw you, all of you guys happy, doing decisions, maybe not all of you. But honestly, the community isn't informed. I have been working so hard with different committees in the school council, GILA, GILA, ECA, coming to the board meetings most of the time. I can miss maybe two or three in maybe a year and a half. So for me, I don't understand much of it. And now I'm speaking for my community. We need to know what's been okay. Thank you.
I also have a comment. I noticed it said general waiver request there and like him, we can't comment on it because we don't know what general waiver means and what it means to pay. So how can we as a public go and say, put the boundary here, put the boundary here, but which put on board, none of us understand. And we've been here, Mr. Hare's been here longer than me. But we can't comment because we're sitting in the in the audience and you are asking the questions, but we have questions that we can't ask. And it's until we make this comment that you know, this is a general waiver. I'm like, what is it? My daughter said, oh, what do you mean, we're not included in the U S Senate census? What does that mean? So she also, the students having questions. And we have no way of asking those questions because we're not getting an opportunity to have our question answered. So it it really is unfortunate that not a lot of parents are here to voice their opinions. A lot of them have the video, they can look at it later. But that, there's a breakup between the parents and and the board where there's no connection. We don't know how to vote or how to say anything and sometimes you don't even know what you're voting on. But you know, just kind of go with the flow, but you can't go with the flow because it's very serious affecting our students now and in the future. You know, it it just, it's just my problem. How is this just, okay, this is passing, this is going, this is doing, you know, it's just, we're like, it's it. You can't even comment if you don't understand. I noticed also that you're asking how to get it out to the public. Putting two announcements on April fourth and on April ninth about this public conference, you didn't get it out to the public. That's not going to help. That's why nobody's here because they have no idea that this is even occurring. A week ago and then yesterday, that's all that was put in any kind of announcement anywhere. There was no calls to the house saying, hey, we've got a public comment coming up. But yes, I did call for my son's party. That's not hard to do. How hard can it be to make the system that you have connect with the parents? Something needs to happen because there's such a big disconnect and it just really scares me on how this is going to move forward. Would help any parents even being addressed or even having their question answered? Is that going to occur when we have the next public hearing too? Are we just going to sit there and listen to it? You guys are asking questions about, how the hell did it work? It's not working. Something needs to happen.
Mr. Chitipong, do you want to apply to the waiver?
I support our idea. So this general waiver request is essentially when you switch from after the at-large election system to a by trustee election system, it automatically triggers the election. For the community at home to vote on this issue if they want to pass the at-large to a by trustee area. The waiver is the way to ask the committee to bypass that because it does bring up potential litigation because of the California Voting Rights Act. And each scenario that I have encountered, the committee, the educational committee has granted the waiver to the school district to afford money that is potentially raised from this election as well as maybe failing to elect the the by, the at-large to a by trustee area. So it helps the school district be in compliance of the California Voting Rights Act.
And I believe the other comment is already not being included in census. That was harvested from there, which right now is no one there. And so we can't draw that between because there's no one there. It won't be available until, I think it was yesterday, fall, summer, it will start its own process.
So that is correct. So we do have to use the twenty-ten census because the board via last, last official recorded numbers by the government. So if there's no communities that would go prior to that census, then they'd not need to be there in the trustee areas.
So just for clarification purposes, if people who are not being included are, because there's no people there now.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? With no further comments, public break, this official calls at seven thirty, seven thirty-five P M. Eight B, Summer School Update. Dr. Bor.
Yes, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Mrs. Chrissy Shaffling, will provide an update on our summer school program. Ms. Shaffling.
Evening. Included a new project that is a broad overview of the locations and dates for our elementary and secondary summer school program. The K five program will be housed at Glen City School and the secondary program will be housed at Santa Paula High School. Tonight, I'll give a brief summary of the courses that we're proposing to offer. Staff has been busy advertising for the positions, I believe, certificated positions or advertisements closed on Monday and classified as working to recruit as well. I'll begin by saying, we, this year, we are proud and encouraged to be able to offer transportation to and from school for our elementary program. It's the first time that we've been able to do this. The decision was made for a couple of reasons. Our elementary program has grown so much in that we've really outgrown the other schools. And Glen City is one of the only schools that now has the capacity to hold all of the great programs. So we're doing so, thank you to the Board of Trustees for passing the contract for transportation at the last board meeting. Flyers will be sent home with students the week that we return from spring break, so we're busy getting those creative and communicating that information to our staff. I'll begin with the elementary and retreat program for the third year. We will continue to offer a summer science academy for students who are currently in secondary fifth grade. We also will continue contracting the Sarnova, the Sarn enrichment courses that we offer for an hour and a half for ten days. For K for two students and K for five, we'll offer culinary arts, three courses in science, one in robotics, a ballet folklorico class as well as an art class for our students. This year, we'll continue to offer the Blancher Library Reading Program as well as an enrichment and intervention program at the Boys and Girls Club. We've added additional classes this year to support intervention. And again, we're working on the recruiting staff. But the courses that we have planned are a primary grade for current first and second graders, English Language Arts Intervention Class that will be paired with a primary mathematics intervention course. We looked at the data and we found those first graders going into second grade that that gap doubles. That was the reason for offering this intervention course. We also will continue to offer an academic language course for our long-term English learners. As well as, again, based on the data that we saw in the CASP, we are planning to offer a fourth grade math bridge course to try to catch those deficits of our fourth graders moving to fifth grade because we did see on our CASP scores that scores dropped in fifth grade. So we've added additional intervention classes at the elementary level. We are recruiting for courses at our middle school. Again, these are new courses that we have not offered previously. We've added, and again, our recruiting staff for a sixth and seventh grade college and careers readiness course to again provide access to different universities and careers. Also a sixth and seventh grade math bridge course, again, based on our data. We are moving forward to intervene during the summer. And we will continue to offer the sixth and seventh grade Abbott Excel Summer Bridge. That's the precursor class for the English Language Development Abbott course that's being offered at Isabel Middle School. As far as Santa Paula High School, we'll continue to offer courses for credit recovery as well as offering enrichment courses. We have Introduction to Media, Arts and Design. Incoming ninth grade students will have the opportunity to take health and choices, college and career to alleviate some impacted schedules. So they're able to take an additional elective. We'll be continuing to offer the New Power E L T Academy, Math Academy for incoming ninth grade students and physical education as enrichment as well as credit recovery. So again, kids can take P E during the summer. It frees up their schedule during the school year to take another elective, whether that be a C P E pathway or just a general interest course. So we're working real hard. We're getting staff in place. And we're working on flyers which will be sent home with students when we return from spring break. So we look forward to another great summer school program.
The board was given a description of the summer school on a Friday update.
Correct.
And I must say, it looks very impressive. This isn't just a credit recovery program. This is far beyond that and I'm very happy with the.
Um, this isn't just a credit recovery program, this is far beyond that, and I'm very happy with the, um, what's on there. I'm sure the board is also happy to follow the course offerings, lots of, um, great resources, and, um, thank you for what we're doing with that.
And we are looking at the data and responding with the data, and that's why you see new targeted intervention courses that is a result of L cap feedback, parent feedback, and achievement data.
Thank you.
I'm especially, uh, happy about the, um, classes that will be offered for summer school parents and middle school. That makes me very happy, because I know a lot of them really need that in high school, that'll help me, so I'll walk there.
Um, I'm sorry, I failed to mention, we will also continue to offer the R O P career camps, um, at the high school. Those run in July, so we really operate summer school all summer long. Um, we're gonna offer for our high school kids, um, stage craft and theater production, which Mr. Cruz will teach. Um, Introduction to Patient Care, which our, um, high school, Elven, Margaret Lopez will teach. And Medical Terminology, that will be taught by Natasha, Natasha Sandor. We've also been able to increase our R O P career camps for middle school. And Mrs. Teri Duran will be teaching at Arts, Media and Entertainment Core. So again, we're recruiting for those as soon as we get, get back from, uh, break. And I also found out, uh, in a meeting with, um, Dr. Jesus Data today, that Ventura College will be offering, um, the history of rock and roll on our Santa Paula High School campus this summer, which that course is a, uh, UC transferable course. So we're, again, reaching out to the many colleges, seeing addition to the offerings at East Campus. How can we begin and increase the offerings on our campus? So that's something also new for this summer.
Can I have a comment? Um, I think everything of the offer is great, including the intervention. I just want to, uh, make sure that we continue to publicize what we're doing, uh, get it out to parents, not just, um, you know, their flyer of what we're doing, but continue to publicize based on social media and, I mean, so often, not just like a one-time posting. Um, because I think the more we publicize it, the more we can get people to understand really what's going on, especially since it involves a health catering as well.
And well, given that when we return, so again, the planning, the marketing, the communication base, but absolutely agree.
Thank you. We will go into action items. Nine A, donations. Um, is there a second? Any discussion? I'd just like to say thank you for all the donations we received. Very much, um, can I call for the vote? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes five zero for the donations. Nine B, interim school impact mitigation program for Imagera Lewis, uh, community. I'd like to call for the motion to approve this.
Salute.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
I just, um, I'm glad that we're continuing to have, um, conversations and negotiations about a possible new school in East Area One, um, and hopefully we can see it before another twelve years pass.
I'd just like to comment that it's about time that we're moving this forward because, you know, it's been for us for a long time, the voters expect something from us. So I think just continue to work with this, um, negotiation movement is just, uh, stat to show them that we're still working on it.
I think it's nice if the public want to realize that it's not as if we're tracking on feet, that we're really working through the process, it's a long process.
We have it over, I mean, we're planning, we'll be funding, agreeing, and we'll get there.
And I think we need to mention too that, um, like, many other things that this school district does, and people think it takes a long time, we're still waiting to hear about funding from the state. And we were actually waiting last year, and we're waiting this year, and we may wait some more.
We hope you have an answer by any rate. But that would help a lot in starting the school, and we, uh, you can start the school, so. Okay, um, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion, motion passes five zero for nine B. Nine C, award of construction contracts for the, for the summer two thousand nineteen projects, maintenance and operations. Bill School, Isbell, McKenna, and Webster, and Santa Paula High School. Dr. Cora?
Yes, we have, um, some bids that were put in for those three different jobs. And so the board is being asked this evening to consider awarding the three contracts. All three contracts, um, options for consideration are all three contracts, the commercial roofing systems for one million six hundred sixty, sixty-six, um, thousand dollars, sixty-six thousand dollars. Uh, award either one contract or two contracts to commercial roofing systems, uh, not awarded, um, will be rejected. Rejected project would be, uh, to rebid in December two thousand nineteen or January two thousand twenty, uh, for construction during the summer of two thousand twenty, or reject all bids. Projects would be rebid in December two thousand nineteen or January two thousand twenty for construction during the summer of two thousand twenty.
Does the motion from the board on how to handle nine C?
So lowest bid right now is commercial roofing system for all three bids, for all three jobs, I should say. So that's one option, and that's the only thing we're gonna do.
So that motion? Seven, two, for all three? All three contracts to commercial? Is there a second? I will second that. Discussion?
Well, there's a reason that we decided to go with all three to one company, just for publicity. Lowest bid, and also, I believe, um, Mr. Hennings in the audience, not only the lowest bid, but I believe we've also had some work with him in the past, Mr. Hennings?
Good evening, yes, gotta go with the lowest bidder, commercial was the lowest bidder on all three bids. We have worked with them in the past, uh, argued over at Renaissance High School about eight years ago. And we did three separate bids so that it wouldn't be such a large job, because that would exclude a lot of small roofing companies from being able to bid out for such a large job. Just so happens that one company that's pretty large came in and won all three bids.
And your work with them through Renaissance High School was satisfactory?
Yes, it was. And actually, we have a gentleman here, the manufacturer Brett from Garland, who knows roofers a lot better than we do, and, uh, has vouched for the, uh, capability of the firm. Yes, they're one of the three or four largest public roof roofing contractors in the greater Los Angeles area.
I just wanna say, I was worried about that too, all three bids coming from the same company. Would they be able to handle it? So it's nice to hear that they're a very large company and can handle that.
So there is a motion on the floor, and we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye, all those opposed? Yeah, so, um, motion passes for the, um, award all three contracts to commercial roofing systems. Thank you. Nine D, resolution two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, authorizing the use of multiple award schedules, contract number oh four, oh one, five six, triple oh six A, construction roofing material. Dr. Cora?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reyes. Staff has recommended the Board of Trustees review and consider approving resolution two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty-two, authorizing the use of California multiple award schedules, CMAS, contract zero four, zero one, five six, zero 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 six A, construction roofing material.
Uh, do I have a motion?
Vote to approve.
I'll second it.
Discussion from the board? Any questions since we have the garden?
I was just, um, for the people in the audience, I was confused on what that was, because I'm not in construction. And, um, it, to me, I'm just gonna restate where in simple language, the way I understand it, is that we can buy direct and we don't have to go through the contractor and incur additional costs to the contractor, that it would be beneficial for our district to save money and go through this process.
That's an A-plus explanation, isn't it?
Yeah, thank you. Just so the public knows, we get the agenda when you do. It, it comes online, we get it all at the same time, um, so, um, we just have the added benefit to ask the questions. So Dr. Cora, Brian to the presentation. And, um, so, thank you for your explanation, and are there any more comments from the board?
I'd like to say, I, I can say thank you to staff members like Mr. Hennings.
Yes.
To answer the question, technical question, so thank you, Mr. Hennings.
Please thank you for the, thank you for the presentation, Dr. Cora. Uh, I'll take the vote now, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. You'll go now to nine B, resolution two thousand eighteen dash nineteen twenty-three, abolishment of human resources specialists, classified. Okay, Dr. Cora?
Yes, thank you, President Reyes. Um, staff has recommended the Board of Trustees review and consider abolishment of the unclassified position. That classified position is under direction, uh, Mrs. Tommy Sanchez Reyes, who's here, our executive director of, um, Classified Human Resources. So if there's any questions, either I can answer, or this is Ray Sanchez.
So could I have a motion? For nine E? Second? Discussion? Do you want to advantage of, is it Sanchez here? Uh, or Reyes, Sanchez Reyes? Sorry. Okay. Uh, all those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Nine F, resolution two thousand eighteen nineteen twenty-four, recognition of Santa Paula and U N five district employees appreciation month. Dr. Cora?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, ask the, um, Board to recommend, um, reviewing and considering approval of the resolution, recognition of all district employees. And I want to say, um, as a cabinet, we were just talking about it yesterday, what's the best way to show our appreciation for all the wonderful staff members we have in the district, certificated and classified? So there's two different weeks. The first week is the week of May sixth through the tenth, where it's considered Educator Appreciation Week. And then, not the next week, but the week after that, then is, um, May twenty to the twenty-fourth, and that's considered Classified Employees Week. So as a cabinet, I understand it's been the history of the district to celebrate both certificate and classified, the week in between those two weeks. So we were discussing, um, what are some small things we would do to show our appreciation for all the hard work that employees are providing with our students.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Nine G, contract with Van Rimet Green Day Company, L L P for associate student body audit. Dr. Cora?
Thank you, President Reyes, um, more commonly known as V T B.
Oh, thank you, nine G.
Because it's so hard to say. Um, staff has recommended the Board of Trustees review and consider approving the contract of V two V and company, L L P, for associate student body audit service, something that even though it was just in, um, observance and finding, um, we're still looking forward to, or looking at moving forward with a, with an audit with our A S meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Thank you.
Vote to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion from the board?
I just wanted to say that, knowing that it wasn't a finding, but looking at the positive side of an audit and how if there is something going, not wrong, but if we could do it better, I think it'd be a great learning experience for all of us in training and, um, I just look to, forward to hearing, um, if we need to approve, let's do it, and, um, we're doing it well, great, but if there's training that can be had for anybody involved, I love it.
To approve.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Nine H, propose new courses for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Dr. Cora?
Yes, thank you, President Reyes. Staff has recommended the Board of Trustees review and consider approving four new courses for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Uh, they're listed as Isabel, at Isabel Middle School, Introduction to Environmental Science, and Introduction to Ethnic Studies at Santa Paula High School, Dan Swan, Media Arts and Design. No new teachers are needed to teach these courses, um, current staff will teach those, so it's no additional cost in the district, plus students will have the opportunity to have a couple of, um, added opportunities to learn.
Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second? Uh, discussion?
I, I would also like to share that, um, in conversation with Ventura College, um, V C will offer a racial and ethnic group relations class at Santa Paula High School, fall of nineteen, on Wednesdays at three thirty. So that's, uh, another new offering that'll be offered at our high school that complements the middle school introduction to ethnic studies. Found that out today as well.
Well, that's good, because I believe there is a need and a interest
Absolutely.
in, um, secondary offering.
Absolutely, so it's, it's a nice first step.
Yes.
My, my, um, initial reaction when I saw this was, I was in this, uh, time of budget crisis, uh, was, are we gonna need new teachers? So it's very early to hear that we can have these classes, and the teachers that we have now will teach these, will conduct these classes. So I'm very happy about that. It's great.
I think we might have a motion to approve.
Come here.
Oh, thank you, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Nine A, approval of school, parent and family, family engagement policy, policy. Um, I have the speaker for all this topic, would you like to speak, Ms. Arda?
Good evening, all members of the board and everyone here on the room. My name is Juan Del. I'm not sure if it is the right topic, but I have something I'd like to share. I have met a lot of parents from elementary school, middle school, to high school. I am the chief person of Crest Hill Elementary School. I am dealer representing Crest Hill. I am the secretary of dealer, coming. I am at the head car, representing Crest Hill. I am leading the board meetings most of the time for about two years. I am doing all this at a killing for all, a better education here in our district, for every single student. What I want to target is, please, before you approve the head car or any other plans, decisions that are received from the state or federal, please, be aware of the needs based in the dashboard and make sure any approval plan is based in the needs of the students. For our students here in our district need more intervention and tutoring to achieve their standards. Parents request this in our schools and know all schools meet the needs of our students. See the dashboard and the casual rules before you make any decision. Head car committee needs more parents for all the schools. Head car committee needs more parents for all the schools. We need to be trained as parents in order to represent all parents and students better. I know we have few parents in board, but thanks God, I am one of them. And since I have been volunteering, I have not received the, um, any training, like in head car. There is a lot of money that we put on the table. There are few parents that are part of the head car need. And honestly, for us to understand everything they talk in there, we need to be trained in order for us to have the right to say, I oppose this, I support this idea and in all the communities. It's like coming here, sometimes I don't understand what I've been talking about, but I learn it. And I'm here for all these students that have been there behind, nobody's saying, thank you so much.
Dr. Cora?
Yes, thank you, President Reyes. Ration out for this item as our approval from board trustees. Each title on school shall join the development and distribution to parents and family members of participating children of written parent and family engagement policy agreed upon by such parents and they periodically change the needs of parents in the school. So, with that being said, staff has recommended the board trustees review and consider approving the parent and family engagement policy.
Do you have a motion? Second. Any discussion from the board? Well, I would just like to say that it says here that each title on school shall join the development and distribution to parents and family members of participating children of written, um, parent and family engagement policy. So, we are, we have two parents and that is our votes. And then, let's check this. Do you have a call for the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes for nine. Nine K. Second reading and adoption of board policy and administrative regulations for student wellness. Dr. Cora?
Thank you, President Reyes. Board trustees recognize the link between student health and learning. They desire to provide a comprehensive program promoting healthy eating and physical activity for district students. nutritional guidelines for foods and beverages sold and served on campus as part of the school's meal program are defined in administrative regulation, in the administrative regulation. So, staff has recommended the board trustees review and approve the revisions to the board policies as presented.
Do I have a motion?
Approve.
Second. Any discussion from the board?
I just want to say, my thing, when I was reading through this at home, what, what made me feel really good was there was a mention about, um, children who get free lectures and free breakfast, that they, that they could certainly still still get anything. So, I'm so glad now, I have so many, um, children who walk like that, that everybody gets really good at. And so, and how I know that is through my grand sense, and I prayed at the high school. And, um, I said, you know, it was quite, I feel like honoring her, her support. They, I said, you can have this food, you know, her, like, you know, that's what they did first about. When you get your food, and he said, no, everything, I, I just go and get what I want, you know? And he said, everybody gets that. So, I'm, you know, that made me feel really good because I grew up in a poor family. I know how that feels and I have to think for the future. So, um, for, for district parents and mothers, I want to, whatever the reason, um, but I'm just really glad that we're, we're learning from that question. So, thank you for all the work you have done to help us.
Ms. Thompson? Do you have a call for the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes by two. Nine K. Second reading and adoption of miscellaneous police campaigns. Dr. Cora?
Thank you, President Reyes. The following board policy is being presented to the board trustees for second reading and adoption. Board policy, according to Regulation eighty-one-three-one-two-point-three, reform complaint procedures, Administrative Regulation thirteen forty, access to district records, Administrative Regulation five-one-four-five-point-three, nondiscrimination slash grassman, grassman, and board policy, Administrative Regulation five-one-four-five-point-seven, section grassman. So, staff has recommended the board trustees review and adopt the board policies and administrative regulations. Updates have been made in order to bring all policies to comply with new regulations and updating district contact information.
Do you have a motion?
To approve.
Second. Second. The, the, people are interested in that, and I'm so sorry. That's fine. Sorry. Oh, okay. Uh, so, do you have a, a, any discussion on this? Okay, yeah. Do you have a call for the vote? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes by zero. Nine? L? Currently, we hold our Williams and Dr. Stroba. Uh, Dr. Cora?
Yes, staff is recommending, uh, the board trustees review and consider approval of the report as presented.
Is there a motion to, someone? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just real quickly, I know I said past principal in my effort, and I was so nice today after the words, I came in, no complaints, I said, yes. So, congratulations, David.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes by two. Okay. Number ten. Consent calendar. Uh, do I have a motion for the consent?
To approve. Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent calendar passed? By zero. Or number comments? Ms. Thompson?
Yes. Well, um, I wanted to say, um, when I read the update last week, I was so happy to see that their conditioning is completed at Lantern and Glen City and roofing works fabulous. Roofing work is being done at Grace Hill so that they can start putting their conditioning in there. And, um, I'm just really pleased and I thank the district for, for doing, for doing that because I, I believe and I know that that will, um, cause our, our source to fill up. I know that reading in a classroom, that is so miserable, it's difficult for students to concentrate and, and all the studies show that it's, it's, it was comprehension and retention, student accuracy by thirty-five percent at least. So, I'm just really thrilled by that and I think it really is so much for that. Um, also, I, um, well, I was going to talk about this stigma about the lunch, but, um, we're not talking about that. Um, just, just think, if you know anybody who would like to set up a scholarship, please help them contact the Scholarship Foundation. Um, Aaron Way is, he's the art president, and he, he now has from the high school. And, um, we're really trying to help as many students as possible in Santa Paula get a nice little chunk of money so that they can go on and further their educations and we're real proud of them. Um, a lot of kids have, have done very well with that. So, um, that's it for me. Thank you.
I just wanted, um, to say thank you to the staffs of both Isabel and the high school for the wonderful opening house, the ribbon cutting ceremonies at both campuses were amazing. Um, so, it was great to see those facilities. I also wanted to thank the high school, the day students and parents. They gave a beautiful plaque to so many people as a thank you there. It was touching to see, to see that. Um, I'm very sad that I was out of town at a conference and didn't get to see the band concert because I understand, I miss something wonderful that I learned about at the conference and it was, it was a great learning experience, so.
To echo off Mr. Cora, this means, saying about the grand open ceremony, I just want to thank everybody who's involved, that, um, including our parents who worked hard to get us, um, the district cultural center. It was a wonderful, wonderful event both at, at, um, at the United Culture Center. Um, I want to thank the bands for actually coming out and giving them their Saturday. Um, both Isabel and Santa Paula High School carnival band. They did put out amazing performance from the people as well as, they call the sponsors that provided for the lunch that afternoon as well. Um, and the last thought thing I have is, again, to echo off Mr. Cora's comment about the all-district band concert. That once again was unbelievable. I mean, they shocked me every time. It's something new, it's something hard. These students working incredibly hard on those pieces of music that they play. And we have something wonderful going on in this district and that's something to need to emphasize a lot more. And as we all know, I'm big on publication. Um, so, I, I would love to just see that advertised a lot more than, because we do have a lot of students, um, in the band programs from elementary over to high school. And the band provides leadership, as we all know, and provides, um, a sense of belonging. So, I think it's great that these students have that. And which leads me to my next comment about, uh, Mr. Cora, having followed a meeting with, uh, Mr. Marquez at the high school, some, what he would like to be addressed for potential remodeling of the band and expansion of that and et cetera. Um, because we have a lot of kids coming up from middle school, which is a part of that. Thank you.
I too enjoyed all of the events. Um, one of the exciting one was the new parking lot at the high school across from the gym. It, um, was very well lit and even though it was eighteen spots, I really do think it opens up that area. And nothing against the houses, but we don't have as much of a feeling of being closed, closing in. So, I just hope that eventually we can work with the city, um, on additional lighting on Palm Court because after the band concert, we see entire families walking down dark, dark streets trying to cross. So, I think that's a priority we need to do if we're going to continue to have the events at the high school and those things. Um, I went to the city park workshop, there's another one this Saturday, maybe. And it was interesting, it was, um, the city is trying to, um, work on receiving a grant for the park area. The thing that was interesting about it was, is that people felt like they had an input and it was interesting to watch the parents. Um, it was enlightening to see that the parents want, and the community wanted just normal outdoor things. So, that was encouraging. Um, which brings to mind that what Mr. O'Kai had said is that maybe we could host some parent workshops, um, in our literacy centers. This workshop was held at, and this is what I thought was funny, they labeled it at the Guadalupe Auditorium. And if you've ever seen the Guadalupe, it's a tall. Auditorium was a stretch for describing it, but, um, anyway, here is our beautiful literacy center. I think it's being underused. Parents have questions, parents need computer uses, students need tutoring, and what do we do? We lock up the facilities that we have and taxpayers are paid, so that's just a thing. We have, um, Barbara Webster will have it soon at Isabel, we have it at Glen City. I really think as we move forward, even though we're tightening the budget, this falls into everything we talk about now, cap, parent engagement, tutor learning. And students really do want to learn, but if they don't have anyone to turn to after they've left the classroom, the whole twenty-four hour goes by and they, they feel frustrated. So, that's, that's something I think we should look into. Um, and I'm always glad to see future agenda items for school safety. Every day that goes by without reading in the newspaper any other crisis at a school is a blessing, but I don't think we can put our heads in the sand. And the police chief has mentioned, it's joint city, they wanted a district-wide, um, joint, um, disaster drill. But we ourselves, we still have Titan, which is just kind of lying there. And again, if we're not going to use it, then just get rid of it, but let's really plan on how we're going to provide, um, safety to our schools. Also, with the drugs and with the violence and with the bullying, I really think that, um, along with air conditioning, that school safety really enhances learning if the students feel safe and they also act in a better way. And then finally, I appreciate the big screens, it's easier to see. Um, I'm sure with our capabilities, um, if the audience doesn't have a phone or a laptop, I mean, if we can't have the agenda on one screen and then the attachment opened on the other because there's a lot of information that I don't think the audience actually even knows or is aware that there has been backup and that we have read it and that's what we're usually talking about, not just the little one.
I'm about to say that we watched, um, the Black Paper Doye Fall dancers were performed at Santa Paula High School in recognition of Cesar, um, Pablos' birthday the last week of March. So, it was really nice to see Teresa, Duro, uh, Bovas, uh, out there leading her students in several dances, representing our school. And that was brought upon by, that was sponsored by Latino Town Hall and other organizations. So, I'm glad we were part of that, our school. And we were speaking of the band, I'm going to say that the band made close three thousand dollars at the mattress sale. Um, I helped, I bought clothes. And, uh, but, um, you know, we've had the mattress sale two years in a row and each year it grows a little more. So, hopefully, the third year will grow more and when people leave a bed or pillows, they go to our, um, then, our, our fundraiser and purchase a bed. And that, they'll be coming out again next year. Um, also, I wanted to say that I'll be a delegate for another two years at the, for the California School Board Association. Part of being a delegate, I'm on a legislative committee, which means that I'm part of the bigger group of twenty-five delegate of school board members. And we go over all the bills pending in the Senate and the Assembly. And it's really nice because you get firsthand knowledge of what all the bills are and then as a group, we make a recommendation, but not after a party discussion. So, even though it's a law or, or a pending, uh, law, we, that's a no-brainer, there's always somebody against it. So, there's always a discussion on every bill because it's apparently not everybody agrees on how they have it. And so, the majority wins and that's how we decide what goes to the, what we, what CSBA agrees to support. And so, I fly up to Sacramento, I get it once, I'm going Friday, I'm going there. So, it's just part of a committee and so, that's how the school districts can stay in hall with the legislation. Um, I think that's a female. I did have a female, but you know, it's ten after eight to celebrate. So, with that, um, I would like to tell you that future agenda items are school safety. Our future meetings are Thursday, May second, and our regular board meeting is Wednesday, May eighth. And I would like to adjourn this meeting at ten thirty-second.
Oh, no. Let's go home.